It's a few minutes, few seconds after seven, so we'll get the meeting started. Welcome to the, this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please no attendances, please. Join me for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Move in second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
The both? Okay. With the beginning of the new school year, we have two new student reps. So would you guys want to come up here and introduce yourselves? And we'll listen to you, have you give your report from the high school tonight. Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Courtney Roth and I'm a junior at the high school.
Hi, I'm Elijah Nielsen. I'm a sophomore at the high school. So as you may know, or if you don't know already, my name's Elijah Nielsen and I'm one of the school board reps this year. My reports will mainly be covering sports as we go season by season. So I'm gonna start out with football. Being a part of the Foxes program, we had a very strong summer in team camp leading into this school year. We hosted a successful jamboree on August 29th and we opened up, and we opened up the 2014-15 regular season last Friday night at home, shutting out the Wilson Trojans 27 to zero. The Foxes are currently ranked number one in 5A in the season's first meetable, garnering 20 of the 21st, first place votes over the Ashton Grizzlies. It's a solid way to kick off this new season. The next game will be against Meritz High School away on Friday, September 12th. Cross-country. Great summer of training with 25-plus participants. There are 75 athletes on the roster and they are positive group and talented runners. First meet, non-score, took place on September 28th at Wilsonville with 1,200 athletes overall. Some special stats. Maddie Furman was the fir-, was the fourth fastest athlete overall. She is currently ranked number two in 5A. Josea Catarol is also a top runner in 5A, seventh overall, and was our team's top for the meet. The next meet will take place at the 45th Annual Silver Falls Invitational, also known as the Monster, on the 10th of September. Thirty-nine teams of all levels will be attending. Looking forward to a great season, Coach Roth, Coach Cross. Girls soccer. The season kicked off with an 0-0 record, losing their first games to Franklin Quakers 1-0. September 9th will be the next game versus Grant High School at home. We are pretty empty, but I think we have a ton of potential to succeed and do really well this season. We have a tough preseason, but it'll prepare us for league and I think we'll kill it if we work hard. SHS's girls varsity soccer team captain, Wizzy Robbs. Boys soccer. The varsity season is underway, starting with an 0-2 at, record at their jamboree on the 20th of August at Woodland High School. September 2nd was their first game home against North Marion High School, ended with a 7-0 win for North Marion. "Our season should be a great season. We need to play 100, with 110% every game, no matter what the score is," says boys varsity starting left back Jonathan Raina. And finally volleyball. Taking, taking sixth of 18 teams on September 6th, we saw a start to the season. Our Lady Fox's first league game home will be on September 11th against Lebanon High School. Thank you so much and that concludes sports.
So I'm Courtney Roth and I'm gonna do the club reports this year. Most of the clubs right now are just getting ready for their years and recruiting new people, but some of them are already doing events. ASV, which is what we're with, is run by Johnny Pharoah and we're preparing for homecoming week, which begins next Monday. The week kicks off with an assembly this Friday, then their dress-up day is all in next week. Next Friday is the homecoming parade, the future Fox Fair, the homecoming football game, and the bonfire, and then the homecoming dances that Saturday. FFA, run by Sarah MacArthur and Scott Towery, competed in the county and state fairs this summer where they had students showing livestock, crops, landscape, and mechanics. Logan Kinsey, who just graduated, won the tractor driving contest this year, which was a great accomplishment for him. And FFA is currently working on planning for the state convention. And Theater, run by Doug Osterhau, is preparing to hold auditions for their upcoming production of To Kill a Mockingbird, which will begin showing on November 20th. The Link Crew, which is run by Katie Cantrowitz and Megan Miller, had a successful freshman welcome day and will be visiting the freshmen throughout the year to check up on them. The Auto Shop, which is run by Butch Steppson, is working on individual projects and improving their mechanical skills. FBLA, which is run by Trish Conlin, is preparing for their season and participating in several fundraisers and team meetings. The Beach Team, also run by Katie Cantrowitz, is starting classes and practicing for their season, which begins on October 11th. And the Red Cross, Red Cross Club, sorry, run by Kirsten Barnes, will be holding awareness stations at football games to promote their club and raise awareness. And the Band, run by Frank Petrick, is practicing and also has a marching band this year for the first year, and they'll be performing at football games and at the homecoming parade. The Choir, run by Jennifer Kircher, is practicing and preparing songs for future concerts. The Cheer Team is practicing for the season and performing during football games. And the Robotics Club received a $10,000 grant this summer to fund their team, and this is the first year that they have two FTC teams, which are middle-level robotics, and one FRC team, which is the highest level of robotics with 100-pound robots, is what William Ward said. And the clubs who have not begun meeting yet and are working on recruiting and receiving applications are the Interact Club, the National Honor Society, Los Agullos, and Key Club and GSA. And that is all the clubs.
All right. Any questions for these guys?
Yeah, the Red Cross Club, I think that's a new one, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
That's what they do? What do they do?
As far as I know, they have kids who just learn about the Red Cross and how to handle stuff in the Red Cross and that's really all I know about it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Good report, you guys.
Thank you.
Great kickoff report. And you're, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to. No pressure.
Absolutely.
We understand. Thank you. Thanks.
You have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to our audience with visitors. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Small group, so. Okay. We'll also have another one later in the meeting if something pops into your mind. Okay, discussion items. Visioning process, draft summary document, Jim Mabe and Jerry Colley.
Tim, you have quite a bit of paperwork in front of you. There is a colored copy of the summary document in the middle of that, for your reference.
We're getting there, aren't we?
We are getting there. That's a tough act to follow right there, though. I was hoping you'd have something else in between.
Very good speakers.
We are getting there and it's been quite a process, but you know, as we all learn in our lives, the journey is normally just as valuable as the end product. And this has been quite a journey, I think, for everyone involved and certainly for, for Jerry and I, as we had, what I'm sure Jerry would agree, what we would call now is the privilege to be able to work with this school district. Not only, you know, have we enjoyed working with the board, but we have gotten to know your leadership team very, very well. And you, I'm sure you are proud of the leadership team that you have here in this, in this district and also, you know, everyone else that, that makes this district such a special place. You know, all of the, all of the staff, the community, et cetera. It's, it's a special place. Not enough people know about this school district, but we're telling a lot of people about this school district. It's, it's a fabulous, fabulous place. We, we're pleased to present the draft Silver Falls School District strategic visioning plan 2014 to 2019 tonight. We finally made it to the point where we, we have a draft report. Jerry and I plan on taking about 10 minutes this evening to go through a number of things. And before anyone starts the clock on that 10 minutes, I just first wanted to kind of go through what we're going to do.
This is pretty important if you go over, we're not too worried.
Yeah, yeah. I hope, I hope you were gonna say that. I'm going to go through what the process was like and the input we received from just about everyone in the community who wanted to give some input. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, the framework for success for this model going forward. Jerry is going to go over the district core values, the mission statement, the vision statement, and the strategic goals that are all part of this draft. I will then talk a little bit about the performance indicators, how those were developed and put together, and what they all mean. Also talk a little bit about accountability. I hope that as board members, you would expect a report like this to have something to do with, with accountability. And we'll get some help from Linda Myers on going through highlights of the 2014-15 action plan that's a part of this report. Following that, we certainly hope that there will be some board discussion and definitely an opportunity for question-answer kind of time when we're, when we're finished. So if that sounds like an agenda that's okay with all of you, we'll go ahead and start. Do you all have a copy of the report, I assume? Right? Okay, good. I want to make sure that we give Linda Kwan a good amount of credit for taking what we put together as a draft of the report and then she makes it look presentable for the public. So anything that strikes your eye in here, that credit goes to Linda Kwan. Hopefully you have a chance to read the letter that Andy has written as an introduction to this plan. It certainly is a letter that I think is compelling and, and will get the attention of all the members of, of the various communities here in the Silver Falls School District. As far as the, the process and, and public input is concerned, you might recall that we began by, it seems like, a long, long time ago, but we had 13 focus groups that we worked with. And everyone who wanted to give any input as to what was happening in the Silver Falls School District at that time certainly had the opportunity to do so. And, and we were very pleased to be a part of that, enjoyed meeting, I think, what was probably a good cross-section of the, of the community here. And we managed during that time, during the focus group time and our visitation time, we made it to every school in the district and a number of other parts of the community. Want to mention that as we went through the process, we made it clear in our minds that, you know, this is a direction-setting document for the district. It's one that you want your staff and community to say, this is the direction we want the district to go and we need to follow this as, with the board's leadership. So it's a, it's a big-picture kind of thing for everyone to take a look at, but it's also has good specificity with indicators, metrics, and an action plan. This, all of this work, as I mentioned, began in August of 2013, so it's been a little over a year since we started this. And, you know, along the way, you know, we had to monitor and adjust, of course, of, well, this is working, maybe this isn't working, maybe we have, need to have a different process here. So that was, that was fantastic. After we had worked with a whole number of people in the community, we then zeroed in on working with the district leadership team. And from the first time we met with them, which was actually during the focus, one of our focus groups, from that time until now, I can tell you that we have seen that team grow together into a very, very powerful cohesive team. And that's what you need to have in order to carry out a plan like this. And that's what you have here in the Silver Falls School District. I want to draw to your attention at the, the bottom of page four, the last paragraph there. Jerry and I, you know, we wanted to make sure that you knew what, what we thought of this and this kind of says it all for us. It highlights programs and initiatives that will be the foundation of the school system's ongoing improvement efforts. All strategies will be aligned with ongoing efforts helping the school system maintain substantial consistency over time. That's incredibly important if you're going to focus. If you're really going to focus and get at goals and make things happen over a longitudinal amount of time, you're going to need to have focus and allow your staff to have some consistency. And we say, we state that the most obvious outcome will be the significant gains in student achievement. That's what it's all about and, and that's what we're here for. Important point, though, we believe that if this plan really becomes a part of the life of the Silver Falls School District, that budgetary decisions will follow. That if, if the priorities are set where you want them, money in the budget will shift to, to those types of priorities. And we're hoping that that will, that will occur. I also want you to know that we were very pleased to see the, the leadership team, other staff in your district, not only embrace this draft plan, and, and really that helped a lot of them to come together, but also embrace the responsibility and the accountability that comes with it. Sometimes that's the difficult part and we were just blown away by how quickly folks said, oh no, we're in this. We're in this for the long haul. We want to be accountable. In fact, we want our names on things, that we are responsible for what happens to students in this district. So very, very pleased with that. In terms of, of how we get to success, certainly we understand that positive results are, are gained by great teaching and student engagement. And one of the, one of the goals, as you know, has to do with student engagement and how teachers get students engaged in, in every aspect of their learning. But we also say, and I want to emphasize this, we don't think that any success, as far as students are concerned, should be predictable by gender, language proficiency, socioeconomic status, ethnicity, or disability. If that becomes really true in the Silver Falls School District, that those are absolutely impossible to predict, you will have accomplished something that most have not, not only in Oregon but across the country. But the plans we have in place here that the leadership team has created will allow that to happen. The visioning plan recognizes that there's more work to be done. And we need to eliminate the achievement gap and raise academic achievement for everyone. That's what this plan is all about and will continue to be about as it's modified year after year after year. We want to cultivate, and we kind of threw in that cultivate word because you might recall it's in the mission statement and we love that word that leadership team came up with, so we stole it again and on page five. But there needs to be a cultivating of the academic culture of high expectations. And I want to remind you, I think we mentioned this to you quite some time ago to the board, with the leadership team, we certainly went through the research with them on this. The number-one indicator of student achievement is high expectations from the adults in the system. Before you have any interventions whatsoever with any academic programs, high expectations is number-one and that will give you the greatest success more than any other indicators out there. So remember that as you look at goals, as you look at what the staff is saying, we want to accomplish, high expectations are extremely important. And it states in here that this district is committed to the fundamental belief that success for all is possible. And that's a very, very powerful statement to have. I know all of you believe that. Jerry and I believe that. And goodness gracious, did we find out that your staff believes that. And, and that encourages us to know that this plan going forward is in the right hands. I want to have Jerry start on several other sections, starting with the core values.
First of all, I need to say to you that over in central Oregon, there is an incredible amount of smoke from forest fires. For some reason, it has really bothered me in terms of my vocal cords and so I'm a little rusty tonight and please forgive me for that. The smoke's as bad over there as I've ever seen it. Most of it coming, I think, from the Oak Ridge area. I would like to direct you to page number six and my comments will be limited to this particular section. I know that you have reviewed this and it's, it's not brand-new to you, but because we're doing a comprehensive review of the plan, these items need to be mentioned one more time with a few comments in each area. When I think about values of an organization, I think about boundaries. It's like, we're gonna build a really large fence for you to work in, but you don't violate certain things. And usually, the culture of the organization has values that are not violated and usually those values do not change very often. So before we did any work on this, after gathering the data, we worked on values. We worked on trying to figure out what those really key things were. And we went to all of the internet work that was done and all of the community forums to try to bring out what those trends were and then check them with the administrative team, you and Andy. Four came out and they're in an interesting order. The very first one is about students. The second one is about staff. The third one is about the board and the superintendent. And the fourth one is about community. And we felt students should be first. There's a really important part that you have mentioned to us and has come up very often since we've worked in your district, and that is the uniqueness of the schools. And so with community involvement and community interest, that last one talks about that being of very high value and something that needs to be nourished and continued. The third one from the bottom that mentions culture, I really put on the school board and the superintendent as being responsible for setting the culture of the organization. And as you see, there's three key parts to that. Integrity, and without that, we don't have anything. Respect and service. So the district core values are the platform of which everything moves up from. And the stronger the platform or the foundation, the stronger the other parts that are built on top of it. Do you have any questions at all about that particular piece we mentioned? And please jump in at any time that I'm speaking. Your questions are more important than my presentation. I want to make sure. The mission statement comes after you've built your foundation. And the mission is really about what the purpose of the organization is. Why was it founded? Why is it here? What is its really main job? And to me, what comes from that is having a united effort. Your, your tagline is moving forward together. And it's about student achievement, really about student achievement. Getting all the resources, the people together to help students achieve. The district mission statement is about if we do this plan properly, at the end of five years, our vision is that 100% of our students are in a position to be able to graduate. That is really an aggressive goal. When you look around the state and you see that many school districts are operating around 68, 69%, for us to say, within five years, if we carry this plan out the way we have set it up, that's our expectation of success. The strategic goals, the thing I want to mention about that is I'm really proud of the leadership team and you for limiting yourself to just a few. We mentioned to you before that the more goals you have, the less accountable you are. The fewer goals you have, the more accountable you are. So if you only have one goal and it was mentioned often and it was out there, there's a great expectation that that be taken care of. If you have 10 goals, most people can't recite what they are. There's very little accountability with that. So our three are about graduation, attendance, and student engagement, which is really about teachers being experts in their craft and being able to have students enthusiastically involved in their daily lessons. And for us to be able to objectively identify that, to be able to see it, to know what we're looking for, and to remedy it when it is not available. I think these strategic goals, again, are very, very aggressive when I see the 100% there and the 95% and so forth. But I do want you to know that recently on attendance, there's been a tremendous amount of information coming out nationally. It's one of the big pushes in research right now, that the greater the attendance, and it makes sense, but it hasn't been featured so much, the greater the attendance, the greater the student achievement. And our document is really about student achievement. So it's gonna be interesting to track that one and see what progress we can make. I've gone through this quickly, but I know that you have reviewed it before. Very happy to take any comments. And if there are none, we will move on to Jim. But just let me see if any thoughts, comments, additions, subtractions, questions. Okay, I did want to say to you that I believe as a board, you have stayed involved with this. You've really let the leadership team and Andy do a tremendous amount of work and bring it to you. And I think you played your role well. And I'm really proud of what you've done and what they've done.
Thank you, Jerry. Jerry mentioned the, the research in attendance and other areas. We presented a whole lot of research to the leadership team over the last lots of months because we wanted to make sure that what they were putting together and selecting was research-based and replace the attitude it is. And there's, as Jerry said, there's so much recent research on attendance, preschool through seniors in high school. And some people wouldn't think the research is so strong and the corollary wouldn't be so strong with kindergarten and first grade attendance tied to high school graduation, but it is. And, and there's ways that, that we can mitigate those absences and get kids off to the right start. And just a side note, because I just wanted you to know how, how strongly we feel about that. And we're thrilled that the leadership team said, okay, the research is right in front of us. We need to have something along those lines. I want you to know that in this document, the first six pages that we've gone through now, that's normally where this presentation ends. Most districts in the nation have a fine little plan that says their strategic plan, and then they add about 45 pages that says, this is what our district looks like, there's some buildings we have, this is our demographics, all of that. And it looks pretty and nice and it's great. But what happens to it? It's show. Kids show. Starting on page seven, we're done with the appetizers. Now we're into the meat and potatoes. Here's where the rubber hits the road. And again, I said it already, but it's worth saying again. Your team, and when I say team now, the larger district team, they have indicated strongly that they're ready to be accountable for what's in this report. And couldn't be more thrilled about that. In selecting performance indicators, what we wanted them to think about is, now that you had your three goals drafted, what would it take? you had your three goals drafted, what would it take to get there? In other words, with 100% of K-12 students being on track to graduate, what does that mean, first of all? And how can we make sure that we're really trapping it? And so what we talked about with the leadership team, and they told us, well, what that means to us, they said, is that kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth, all the way up, not just high school, are on track to graduate. Now, you might think that sounds kind of silly. Is that first grader on track to graduate? Well, guess what? There's a whole lot of research correlated to that as well. And so the very first indicator says students will be on grade level in reading and math. Reading and math, we know, are the two strongest areas and indicators of kids being able to graduate from high school. And so we say, we're going to track K through 12 students, all of them, on whether they're on grade level in reading and math. We're going to see if students learn at least six high school credits by the completion of ninth grade. Huge, huge research upon that. And students will have fewer than nine absences in this school year. That's huge. By the way, 18 absences in a school year nationwide is considered to be chronically absent. And if none of those absences are consecutive, you think, eh, 18 in a year, none of them are consecutive, we hardly notice. But guess what? Missing, let's say, three days a month for nine months, that student's just missed five weeks of school. So if you really start thinking about it like that, attendance is crucial to being on track to graduate. Every student will attend 95% or more school days. So your leadership team thought, that is so important, the attendance. We're going to make that a goal in and of itself. And so let's get at this. So students will attend school every day during the first month of school. I'll tell you, the kindergarten and first grade students, if they become chronically absent at all, and let's start with kindergarten, regardless of their ability level, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of any other factors you can think of, that carries with them through third grade with lower academic performance. If they are coming from poverty, it will stay with them through fifth grade, regardless of the interventions you try. That's how important that is. So that first month of school, getting every student off to the right start, and your staff is prepared to track that. Never tracked that kind of thing before. Most school districts don't, but they're prepared to do that. Students will not miss more than three days in any three-month period. That's a key one, because that's what we don't notice. We have kids out, they're not consecutive absences, and we don't really notice, hey, that kid's missed three days in a three-month period or more. We've got to track that and be ready to intervene. And K through 1 students will not miss more than five days of school in an entire school year. We have to get kindergarten and first off to the right start because the research is strongest on attendance right there, followed closely by sixth grade and ninth grade. And our third goal, 100% of the teachers will be proficient or distinguished in the district standard for student engagement. We wondered for a while, how are we really going to measure that? Because we insisted, everything you come up with must be measurable. They said, we can measure that. And with the new evaluation system that's in place and the metrics they have in place inside of there, they can do that. We're convinced. So then we say, well, teacher observations, then, I see there's a type 0 observations. Teacher observations will include the following, and there's six things listed there, or five things. And so those are things that principals and peer teachers can observe directly in a classroom. Are the students highly motivated to work on all tasks and persistent even when the tasks are challenging? Are students actively working rather than watching while their teacher works? That's a fascinating one. If you have to read, you have to read that a couple of times. What did that say? Students actively working rather than watching while their teacher works. It's important. So, you know, altogether, there's 11 indicators on this page, and those are the indicators that we want to really focus on and have constant data being gathered. So how do you do that? Jim, yes?
Quick question. Back up to the top goal, where do those baseline figures come from?
The baseline figures, we asked your staff to come up with their best idea of where your district stands as of, at the end of 13, 14 school year. And I want to make one mention about that. When you're starting a plan like this anytime, your very first kind of baseline data you're starting with and the numbers that you create, you know, to project out from there, they're not going to be the strongest. In fact, the first year, those numbers are going to be the weakest that you'll have throughout this entire process. What will happen after one year, after tracking that data very carefully in this district, you will have solid data that you can hang your hat on. Say, that's the data that we know we have, that's what we can use. And then projecting out from there, so a year from now, these numbers will look a little bit different based on the numbers we know we'll have at the end of this school year. That make sense?
Good.
Okay. All right. Thanks. So we know that these indicators with those percentages are not enough. That, just having that written down somewhere, that's not going to cut it. And by the way, there are some districts across the country that actually do that, but then they stop because that's, it's really good. Gosh, we're going to work on that. But there's that little thing called accountability. I think we were most nervous when we were talking to the leadership team about accountability because we wondered how they would accept it. Well, they embraced it in a huge way and said, we want our names on things. I was impressed with that. So the idea here is, is that there's got to be ownership from the board, from the superintendent, from all staff, the community. There has to be ownership over this plan, because this plan is going to continue on for several years. Hopefully, a long time. Hopefully, you will never be without a plan ever again in this school district. It will just continue on and on and on. So we say on this page, at least twice per year, the board will be given a progress report during a work session that includes the following information for each strategy area. Key actions taken since we reported last, data to support that, and planned activities for the next three months. Gosh, if I'm, I'll just say this on this part. I really believe this on a whole number of other parts of our leadership report, but if I'm a board member sitting there, I'm loving this. Twice a year at least, and you can ask for more often, but at least twice a year, I'm going to get a complete report card of where our district is. I don't have to wait for the state to give me something. I can get it right from our staff who are tracking data in all these different areas. So remember those three things. That's what you should expect as a board. The key actions taken since we talked to you last in this particular area? What is the data that we've collected? And what are we planning now for the next three months based on that data? That's what you should see. And then, once a year, the district leadership team will reconvene to get at, what do we need to change now and alter here to even focus and drill down farther to make sure that we're making progress? And we mentioned that the board would adopt the revised five-year plan annually. So you wouldn't just wait five years. At the end of each year, there's going to be alterations, and you'd want to adopt that new plan going forward and get it out to your community so everyone knows we don't just sit there and have this thing collect dust. The final piece of the puzzle, the framework that we put together with the leadership team, is you need to have an action plan for the year we're starting right now, 2014-15. And that action plan has to include things that are going to be happening in all three of our goals. And I'm very pleased that the leadership team rolled up their sleeves, went to work, and created what I think is a pretty strong action plan that will get at not only collecting a great amount of data, but interventions that will really improve student performance in all three of our goals. I've asked Linda Myers if she would spend a couple of minutes going through what this action plan is and how it would work.
So the first page is the action plan there. Page nine, they tie specifically to District Number One. So that is the students being on track to graduate. And you'll notice that Andy will be the lead person for monitoring the accountability for that, and Doc Russell to be that. Soon in the near future, the administrative team, the building principals, and district office staff will divide the performance indicators and will actually agree to be kind of the point person. And then that performance indicator, whoever is responsible for that individual performance indicator, that will then be embedded as part of their regular reports. So when a building principal is coming to you, you will be hearing a report, as you typically have over the years past, about their building, how things are going on in their building. But they also, at that same time, then will share specific information on whatever their performance indicator is. So the first strategic goal, as far as kids being on track to graduate, focuses mostly on assessment and achievement and intervention. So how are kids progressing academically? How do we know? And how are we responding? How are we responding specifically to those kids who are not on track to graduate? So continuing to discuss our tiered levels of intervention, and what does that look like in a regular gen ed classroom? What does that look like in a specialized small group setting? What does that look like in a specialized service place such as Title I or special education as well? So you'll see the lists of assessments that we currently have in place. That will be likely expanded over time as S-Back really comes on board and we get a better sense of what that looks like. We'll have additional data there. But we have, having the data is not our problem. So, you know, really digging in and, you know, what is the assessment data telling us and how are we responding to that? So David, you didn't get a chance to, it looked like you were going to maybe ask a question about where the data came from as well, when Tim was asking that specifically. So those baseline numbers are rough compilation, some rougher than others. So the 80% baseline for that first performance indicator, where students will be on grade level in reading and math, is literally just a statistical average. It's not a straight average. But it is looking at Oaks data, our reading achievement scores over time at all grade levels continue to be consistently higher than our math scores at almost every grade level. But to drill down that deep in this document didn't feel appropriate. So when you are having presentations specifically on the performance indicator, that's when you would get that kind of, that level of specificity, where are strengths, where are weaknesses?
Thank you.
You're welcome. The second target performance indicator there, the at least six high school credits, we, the research is very, very clear, and we knew that that was critically important. But I was incredibly pleased when I pulled up our baseline data. In fact, when this went out, you're like, gee, 95, that 96, that 97, 98, those are really, really aggressive goals. But I'm pleased to announce that that baseline data is accurate. That's a hard number. So last year, out of our, out of 314, no, I'm sorry, 321 freshmen, last year only 14 at the end of the year had not successfully earned all six credits. So that puts us at just about 5%. We have a lot of work to do with that 5%, and those would be some of the discussions that we can be having when we're talking about specific performance indicators. The numbers, it appears that while 95% of our kids are earning six credits by the end of the freshman year, the kids that are not earning six credits are not earning any credits. I mean, they're severely deficient. So we don't have a population of kids that are just missing it by the skin of their teeth. We have the haves and the have-nots. And so that's something that we'll continue to discuss over time. And I think, again, drilling down into this kind of performance indicator will allow us to bring that sort of data to your attention.
What's a distribution look like as far as credits at the end of my grade?
You mean as far as which content areas?
As far as how many credits a student typically would have?
Well, you can earn seven credits. But, so they're enrolled in seven courses, and each semester is worth half a credit. So a student that successfully passes all of their classes their freshman year would have seven credits. The research says that six credits is about where you need to land in order to be considered on track. And kids don't have to pass every class every year to still be on track to graduate. I mean, we don't emphasize that, but that is, that is the principle. As we move to, I'm going to turn to page 10, even though we didn't necessarily address that bottom absence component, because the whole next goal, strategic goal number two is all specifically targeting attendance. And I just wanted to draw your attention back to the way that strategic goal is worded. The State of Oregon has a lot of accountability regarding attendance. It's printed in our state report cards, it's printed in our school report cards, it's printed in the newspapers. But those numbers that are typically advertised are attendance averages. So when you talk about an average daily membership, you're targeted 92% attendance. And that's not what the administrative team was interested in tracking.
Can I mention one thing? It's possible to have a school with 95% attendance rate and have over 25% of your students chronically absent. That's something that schools don't look at. They look at that larger number. You got to drill, you got to drill down. And I should add also, Oregon has overall, is one of the states ranked at the bottom in terms of student attendance. So Nancy Golden just recently came out with a statement saying, we've got to do something about this statewide. So silverfalls is going to be ahead of the game for sure.
It's a tough goal because we're not correctly influencing that behavior.
True. And we had some conversations about, are we setting a goal? Are we attempting to control something we can't control? But I do believe that there are a lot of messages that we may currently be sending to families and different messages that we should be sending to families. For instance, just a very simple one that came up, it's that bottom bullet. So the first performance indicator, students will attend school every day during the first month of school. That final bullet, teacher, secretary, and administrator will actively discourage routine appointments starting September. It's fairly common for a parent to walk in and say, well, my child needs to get a physical, to play sports. And those are opportunities that we may be missing, where it's a very easy time to step back and say, you know what? We understand that your child needs to do that. We also understand that it's critically important that your child be here. So we certainly would encourage you to find an appointment after three o'clock. And just some of those, not necessarily subtle, but just a different way that we interact with families regarding attendance. Most, if not all, of the principals have done a fantastic job of crafting some attendance language in their first week letters, first day letters, kind of depending how those go out in individual school settings. And those were flying around via email. And some really good angles on beginning some discussions with parents and putting this out at the forefront. And one of the principals actually embedded some data from their school building from the prior year. Did you know that we had this many kids that missed, you know, 20 days of school last year? That's, you know, that's four, that's a month of school. Did you know that we had this many kids that missed? Whatever, 40 days of school, you know, or whatever. But putting really hard numbers to it gave it teeth. And because it was talking specifically about their community, now the principal was able to say, these are our kids. Our kids are not here frequently enough. You need to be here. This is important. So we'll kind of continue to see how those things play out.
Yeah, to me, some information we just heard a little bit too about missing kindergarten and the first grade, how long that lingers.
Yeah. And in all honesty, if you look at that, back at the actual data numbers, that's baseline data. That 2014-15 number where it says K-1 students will not miss more than five days of school in a school year, our target's 40% because our current percentage is lower than that. So that means 60% of our youngest kids who currently miss more than five days of school in their very first two years, in their first year or second year, that's not a combination of K or 1. And actually, our kindergarten attendance is the worst. It really, that number was 23% for last year. So that means that you've got 77% of your kindergartners who are missing more than five days of school.
It may be, it may take, I mean, it may take a while to train to get this, but just to have it out there and to start stressing the correlation between attendance and student success is going to be a real problem.
Absolutely. There's a wide perception, especially for younger grades, it's not important.
It's not important. Yeah. And that's, yeah, Andy, I'm just having conversations. And even, you know, discussions about when we craft language around the shift from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. Does that inherently somehow make it feel more important? And is the fact that, oh, my child's only there for two and a half hours somehow make it seem more acceptable? Well, they miss, well, they're only working two and a half hours. So again, some of those nuances, I'm just trying to get a handle on that K-1 population. And a lot of that is kids too. Yes, I understand it's the parents that get kids to school every day, but if kids want to be there, I live with a six-year-old, and he can be really, really, really tenacious if he wants to be. So, you know, we do understand that school is important, and, you know, kids play a lot into that. They really do. And by the same token, when kids don't believe it's important to be there, or when they don't feel like they're missing anything when they don't show up, that sends a message home as well. well.
Linda, I'd like to make a point here. We have talked to the administrative team and Andy about, as we discuss these particular items, especially with parents, we want to start off by letting them know what the most current research says about these. So that it's not somebody from the district standing up and indicating what they'd like to see, that it's someone who is skilled in the craft, who is current on the research saying, the reason we're talking to you about this is this is what we're finding across the nation, in our state and locally about these indicators. And this research says to us, this is really important and this is what happens when we violate what the research says. So we're, we're going to try to be more on top of the most current research as we communicate, having that being the starting point of what we're saying.
Page 11 is strategic goal number three. And this is going specifically with the concept of student engagement and increasing our teachers' ability to raise the level of student engagement in the classroom at every grade level in every content area. We will settle on some common language. You'll see meat or seed in some verbiage and we'll see proficient and distinguished in others. And so we'll settle on, I think our, our agreed home language is proficient and distinguished because that's what it's called in the Danielson framework for teaching. So as a reminder, we're moving back to the Danielson framework. That is the document, the benchmark standards by which we are measuring teacher effectiveness in classrooms. Your administrative team and a group of select teachers have already completed two full days of training in the course of the summer. There are five additional full days of training that the entire administrative team will be continuing, specifically focusing on Danielson and specifically honing in on student engagement. We've, for the first time, moved to the concept of teacher cadre, which are peer observations. When Marie Freger was here sharing with you the components of the collaboration grant, that was a huge piece of that. So we have 15 classroom teachers who have agreed to volunteer extra time and will be released from their regular classrooms to go out and do peer observations and provide their peers with feedback. And that feedback will generally focus specifically on the component of student engagement. So what you see on this action plan for strategic goal number three are some of those activities. So all teachers will be trained. Our admin team and our teacher cadre has already been trained. We're providing similar training in shorter format for the entire district on statewide in-service day, October 10th. So we're bringing in a freshman trainer to complete a four-hour, what we can get in four hours for our teachers, specifically focusing again on student engagement and what that looks like in the classroom. And breaking down some of those preconceived questions about what we believe that engagement is. So because kids are quiet and on task does not necessarily mean that they're engaged. So really breaks down some of those, listening is not engagement. Things that we believe to be somewhat effective, but the research is telling us that if, if we don't have evidence that the students are actually engaged and actively participating in the learning, that the correlation with increased achievement, it doesn't exist. So we really have honed in on that. And so you'll see that this entire page of action plan activities really focuses on providing teachers consistent and timely feedback on their strategies for increasing student engagement. So that's where we land on page 11.
I'd like to mention one more thing of that. It's something that Jim brought up earlier in the page of the central point. If you look at the last page that Linda was talking about and you see under the goal that she's in charge of that for the district, she will have an administrator from the district who will work with her as a team that will be in charge of each one of the bold type indicators underneath that. And this will be the team that will present to you when it's time to talk about this area. We're looking at individual administrators to not only care about their school or their part of the district, but the entire district around these indicators. I have very seldom seen in the private sector where there's a strategic plan where under the goals, there is a person's name and under the task to achieve the goal, there's a person's name. Very seldom seen it in the public sector and in school districts. And we felt that you've put so much time and energy into this plan, but the thing we had to do was make sure there was a strong, leave you with a strong accountability component. And I had mentioned to the administrators, as a superintendent, I really knew that I had strong administrators when they were more concerned about the overall district than they were their school or their function in the district. And that's the kind of culture we, we try to embellish on the administrators with this. If you're willing to put your name down to one of the overall district indicators and as a district office administrator under one of the goals, then we think that's what's going to help move it forward. And I personally think it should be a part of their evaluation. So it's like they have two jobs. They have their job and then they have the job of helping to implement and carry out this particular item, this, this item within this one.
Questions?
So that's, that's the plan. And we know that you're going to be meeting again two weeks from tonight in a work session. And I think this will be on the agenda. My hope is, is that tonight, of course, if you have questions about anything in the report that we can answer for you or in the plan, but also between now and, and two weeks from now, if you have questions, don't hesitate to contact us or questions of any of your staff that are, they, they know this in their sleep by now. In fact, it was great because several meetings we had, I would just look at Linda and say, okay, Linda, go. And she would recite the mission statement. So that, I mean, she had that down early on. It was so great. But we will be, no problem answering any of your questions between now and, and your work session, but we hope that you get a chance to really take a good, strong look at this and come up with any questions you have. We want you to have more than, it's more important than anyone else in the district. We need the board to have ownership over this.
One last piece, Jim, if possible. I've always reflected from the, the board members having dialogue among themselves on things and kind of listening. Do you folks want to take just a few minutes here, and I know it's, just to talk to one another about this? Any items that you'd like to, to question one another about? Good, bad, or indifferent?
Yeah, I was going to ask if there were any questions and comments, so.
I think you missed a really good, a good discussion last work session about aspirations and goals, aspirational goals versus goals that we could actually meet in a certain timeline. And I think some of these, some of the new, the things that we're seeing tonight, particularly about attendance, may be some of the same kinds of things. I think it's easy to put it down on paper and it's easy, I mean, it's not easy, but it's easy for, it's easier than actually accomplishing the goal. For example, with attendance, that's a, this is a really tough one and this is a, I mean, it's, it's laudable, it's commendable, wonderful goal and it's so vitally important to education. And I have to apologize, you, you have smoke on the east side. I have, we have dust, lots of dust. The fields are being worked again. So, you know, and I live out in the country, so I feel like a vacuum cleaner bag right now, but I, we have had some good conversation about this and I think that we'll continue to have those conversations.
Actually, I have concerns last meeting of these goals are achievable. Heard a lot, heard a lot and clearly the administrators want, want these goals, so we'll go for it.
You know, David, I've, my whole career talked about the aspirational versus the achievable. But I'll tell you, as Jerry and I both have really dived into the research on attendance, the fact is, is that all of the reasons students are absent fall into three categories. I won't go into those tonight with, with you, but I will say this, those schools and school districts across the country that have broken those down into those three areas and then worked to mitigate in each one of those three areas and created a culture of attendance within their, their district and their schools have made a huge difference on their attendance rates.
Sometimes if we could get the attendance that we get for athletic teams to be the same as in the classroom, and you know, it's the same kids, but it's about the motivation and the interest and enthusiasm, et cetera.
Yeah, I think, I think this is exciting to see and to see it all put together like this. And, you know, sure, the goals are, they're high and high aspirations, but on a lot of these, how do you make it any less? You know, to have kids on track through, you know, kids on track to, for graduation, how do you go make that less than 100%? You know, for a fifth grader or sixth grader or first grader. So I just think, I mean, I know they're, they're high goals and high aspirations, but it's exciting. I think it's exciting to see and it's exciting to see the administrative team so excited about it and ready to, ready to take this on because it's important. And I think, I think setting the goals high lets the public know and shows people that we are serious about this and that it is very important. And especially the higher the, you know, the requirements get from the state, then it becomes even more serious.
I love your idea about signing names to it too, because that does provide ownership. And get your name assigned to it, you're going to be watching over it all and making sure everybody else is, is working with you.
And you have to come report to the board about the area that you're overseeing for the entire district. We had talked to Andy right before the meeting tonight, at the end of one year, it might be interesting if he would consider putting a team together and possibly going to OSBA annual conference and where the Cosa annual conference and talking about what you have found out after one year, whether this really, really made a difference or not. Because I know that there are a lot of districts that are interested in this, that they're not getting any data about, okay, after you've completed it, how effective was it? And I think that you're going to find a lot of indicators at the end of one year that would be really important for other people to hear about. So something to keep in mind.
I think these are all really great and it's a great idea to move forward with it. I just really hope that there's a lot of support for the teachers as a lot of these include them as having extra responsibility. And so the support from the administrators down to that and giving the available time for that, I think is also important because you can't just give them more without taking something else away and that there, there is time for this as well and that they're still able to achieve the level of time for their actual academic part of it too.
That's a really important point. And one of the things that we talked to the administrators about is exactly what he said. If you are going to give already hard, people who are working really hard, new tasks, you also need to help them find out areas that they can stop doing that are not as important. We're saying these are the most important things. So there's some things that are being done right now that actually need to be abandoned so that effort and energy can go here. And it doesn't feel like it's an add-on, but it's an improvement to what already is being done that will help you as a teacher be more successful. And without that, then I think we'd have teachers in a situation that just feels so, it's one more added burden to my already burdened load. Very important point.
Yeah, but this, I mean, and all kind of along those lines, this could be a driver of what's, what happens in PLCs. And, you know, all along the line, and you know, like you said, Jerry, takes certain things away because this is, this is what's going to drive things now. And it can drive our budget decision, where we spend our money on what teachers are doing, you know, teachers need to get out.
And if, if, if this really has ownership and commitment from staff, absolutely, PLC should be dominated with this, dominated.
And I think student achievement should be dominated on your agendas as well. That at least every regular meeting would have something about student achievement on it because that's really what the entire plan is about to do. So that you need to be heavily engaged and maybe more engaged in that particular area.
Well, I just think it's, it's excellent. Personally, very excited about it. And I like very far-reaching, hard-to-obtain goals. And my position at the last meeting was that you need to have that guiding star. Even if you can't reach it, you can still keep chasing it.
Sure. And it's really, really good to work with you. Very good. You've been, as a board, you've been extremely supportive of the effort.
So will you guys be back, assuming you survive this one?
I hate to think that this would be the last time that we'd see you. And we're really interested in what happens at the end of year one. So we'd like to follow along, at least on the data and the progress it's been.
Yeah, we're, we're going to follow along for sure. We're going to track this. We, we've, you know, developed relationships with your administrative team. We know how strong they are. Andy's leadership has been outstanding and your support has been so important. Believe me, the staff out there feel your support and it's so important. But we're going to track this. We, we aren't going anywhere. Can't hurt us that easily. So we'll be, we'll be tracking it. Jerry and I are both very curious to see how things go and what adjustments are made along the way. There has to be adjustments made and what this plan then will look like a year from now. What it will, how it will look different next to what it looks now and will look different. And we are available anytime for any questions, email, phone, anytime from anyone. That's just, comes with the deal.
Other questions?
On behalf of the board, I want to thank you guys very much for the work you've put into this and the direction. And I know it's been a long process, but this is really cool. The outcome is really exciting to see. Thank you very much.
We enjoyed it.
Thank you.
And do come back.
We will.
Figure a year from now.
There's, there's no question. There's no question we'll be back.
Okay, moving along. 2014-15 draft district goals. They were in our two goals and for that, for this coming year in our packet. I assume that just to talk about the work session, the last work session a little bit, I will conclude. Discussion on these. I think they sound good. I mean, given the goals that are in the, in the district visioning plan, the first one especially.
They're gold.
Yeah, it's a huge goal. So I think, I think they're, I think they're good. I like the idea of not overloading the goal department. Discussion on this? Okay, sounds good.
Tim, can I chime in as well? If, if the board is, is in favor of those, you could make this an action item this evening if you chose to.
Okay. Why don't we do that? There's no special, make an action item, get it on the, on the books. Okay, next up, the 2014-15 board meeting calendar. There was a list in our doc, in our packet of the board meeting dates for regular sessions and work sessions. The only, the two things I wanted to bring up, December 22nd work session, that's three days before Christmas. So we want to move that one forward a week. And also March 23rd is the Monday of spring break heavily. So in the past, on situations like that, we've moved them, moved those work sessions forward up a week. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
You mean, so it's a week earlier?
A week earlier.
Yeah. Okay. That's fine with me.
That's a very good idea.
Okay.
Denise, do you want to change those to whatever they turn out to be? Okay, we have a few policies. Like Andy said, he's held some of these off for a little while because of our full load the last few months. So let's go through them one by one. Policy GBNA adds hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, menacing, cyberbullying. Is there any, anything on this one anybody have? We're good? GCAB, personal electronic devices and social media. Anything? Anything?
It's a good change, it's just amazing, it's a fairly recent policy, it's amazing how things.
How many changes?
Yeah. Stacey, while I, I told you two thousand and ten, it was two thousand and twelve when we most recently adopted this policy.
That's incredible. Some of the stuff's on your obsolete already.
Yeah. Not done on that one? The last one is also on electronic devices. JFCEV, personal electronic devices and social media. Anything on that one?
I thought this one was particularly hard to understand. I just thought that the wording was tricky and one, I mean, there's lots of little things about it, but it's interesting. One of the first things that's interesting is we identify personal electronic devices as a PED and then we never use the word PED and the whole rest of the document. But anyways, I just thought it was just really confusing. I don't know, maybe it was me tonight, I'll reread it another day, but.
Were there any, anything you saw that you want to change on at all, or? This is the first reading, so we have two more after this.
I don't have anything specific to change on tonight.
Okay.
I started rewriting a bunch of sentences and stuff, but then I decided, maybe I just need to come back to it.
Okay.
It was at the end of the day, so.
PED comment's a good one. They don't use it anywhere elsewhere in the document. Why? Quite listed.
Yeah, that's true. We could pull that up.
No problem.
Anything else? Like I said, this is the first reading, so we can visit these again. Okay, and, um, other items. I just wanted to note that, and Andy can chime in on this too, but Andy gave us at our stations tonight, some copies of some bond promotional stuff, bond frequently asked questions and bond fact sheets. And these are things that, as we move towards November, then when we're out and about in the public, I think it's important that we as a board, you know, be available to answer questions and to, to promote this thing. And we have different rules on administrators. We can, when we're by ourselves out there, we can tell as many people as we want to that they need to vote yes, and they should vote yes, and the reasons why. And so, um, these are just some copies that we can, you know, carry along with us, send in your car pickup or whatever, and when questions come up, these are good things to hand out. I just think it's, you know, one of the things we've heard at our, one of our last audience visitors was encouraging board members to get out there and to promote this thing because we're the ones that people are looking at in a lot of cases. And so this is good stuff. Andy, can you have any?
Yeah, I think you've summed it up very well, Tim. The only addition I would make is this information comes directly from the school district or the bond website, which is a separate website from the school district, but there's a link from the district website to this site. And it, especially the FAQ document is intended to be a, a living document, something that can be added, modified as we move ahead over the course of the next few weeks. And we rely upon the public, but I have a special request of each of you, that if you're hearing a pattern of, of requests or, or information or questions that are not being factually addressed through the website or through this information, please let me know. We're modifying it as, as we move along. That would be very helpful. That's it.
Yeah, somebody's frequently asked questions. I saw somebody had posted, made a Facebook post from the district website, and I can ask from there, they're really good. They really can answer a lot of questions. So very important.
And Tim, that just triggered a thought, might as well. The school district now has a Facebook page and we have all of this information referenced on our Facebook page and it's being accessed and liked.
What is the Facebook page?
It's, it's Silver Falls, it's Silver Falls School District.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that or any other discussion items? Okay, administrative staff reports. Andy, first week enrollment, superintendent goals.
I place in, in front of you, not an unfamiliar document for any of you. You've seen this, each of you, and you've been on the board multiple years. It's a comparison of first week enrollment for, from year to year. Again, I'll, I'll put it with this claimer that it is a snapshot in time for the first week of school. It's, I think it's a good reference to use as we move ahead. The real critical date is October first for a variety of reasons in this school district, and it's not a font for these dates, excuse me, for these, these figures to adjust between now and, and October first. So any changes that you see or any questions that are raised at this point, we've surely addressed tonight, but I would ask that you be patient and wait to see what happens over the course of the next month and rely upon those October first figures as more reliable data. However, just to point out a few items of note, first of all, the total, you are static enrollment, essentially you're flat. Thirty, you're, you're up about, what, twenty kids almost? And that's great. However, you've been above thirty-eight hundred in this, students in this district in the past and you're at thirty-seven eighty-six today. So we'll take flat enrollment. Increasing enrollment is always nice from a supporting standpoint, but we, we want to stay away from declining enrollment and we are. So that's great news. You'll see that there has been some changes at a couple of schools. We actually had quite a few move-ins late last spring and over the summer out of Beuk Creek. You'll see a, a jump there. In fact, Kevin and I had a conversation recently and we've shut that building down. It's, at three twenty-five is, is a solid, healthy, very full number to be in school. Similarly, at Victor Point School, it's not a surprise to you, we've, we've been addressing those numbers at Victor Point for the last couple of years and they're remaining strong and it's shut down as well. Otherwise, you'll see we've gone up and down. Silver Crest has gone down by five. I, I don't point that out as a, as a point of concern, but I do point out that, that out as a reference. Our smallest schools especially seem to have the, the highest disparity between peaks and valleys, and I think that's what we're experiencing in Silver Crest. We've seen, seen Silver Crest almost a hundred and sixty students in the past. So my sense is that number will come back up. I'm pleased at the, the, the numbers at Scotts Mills School are at a hundred and forty-six, they're up nine. I think the full day kindergarten program has made a difference out there. And, and I think also the, the attention, the effort that the Scotts Mills staff in Maryland has done and even the attention drawn by this board to the, the assets of Scotts Mills School has made a difference. She's full in many of her classes and it's a good thing. So anyway, that's for your reference, and if you have any questions, I can address this.
Not to be nitty-gritty, but just for anybody watching on TV, Beuk Creek Building has shut down. You've just, you've just denied, you're not denying it, or you're denying it.
Thanks, Steve, it's a good one. We're still operating tomorrow.
Yeah, Beuk Creek is still operating. Kids are stopped to go to school anymore.
That's a really good point.
You're always so good, Andy, I have to give you one.
Oh, absolutely.
Other questions? Okay, superintendent goals, Andy.
Given you a copy of my goals, these are goals that Tim and I discussed with our meeting last week. And similar to your district-wide goals, they, they include two. For the sake of the public and the audience, I'll, I'll cite, cite these. The first one is administer, administer district-wide strategic visioning plan. It's a common theme that you've heard this evening and also with your district goal with a number of activities and timelines to address that specifically. And the second is a, a new goal, and it's something that I think is entirely timely with, with the completion of the visioning process and also it's something that really we haven't done in this district for about fifteen-plus years, and that's to coordinate district-level program management and efficiency review. Exactly what that will look like at this point yet is, is not defined, but I believe that we're in a position that having some assistance to review fiscal program, special education, potentially technology. We've done quite a bit related to facilities over the last few years, so I'm not certain that we need a ton of attention there, but there are some others, just overall management of our systems and structure. I think it would be very good review for us to have, for you to hear and to see if there are some efficiencies that we can implement in this district as we move ahead.
Questions? Okay, good, thanks, Andy. Scott, financial report.
Yes, in front of you, you see a very abbreviated financial report this month. It's not that we have nothing, working very diligently in the business office this month and last month. But we are still experimenting with different formats and the new software to present board reports to you that are meaningful, give you enough information without overloading you with a number of pages. So this is one sample that we're, we're thinking about doing, which is an expenditure report broken out by fund. Right now, I'm thinking that we'll probably get back to doing a one-page balance sheet for you, which encompasses all district-wide, as well as an income and expense statement, kind of like your traditional income statements that you might be used to looking at in private business, or the district and breaking out also the stuff by school. So the, so we can just do one report for you and then slide that to all the administrators as well so they know exactly what they're standing at any time. Majority of our work in the business office has been focused on the field work for the audit, which wrapped up on Friday. Pleased to say that the field work went very, very well. We had a very small number of, in fact, just one suggestion to, and that was to automate our fixed assets. Right now, we track that on a spreadsheet. Automating that would be a fairly simple thing for us to do. And so I was really happy that that was the only real issue that, that they identified for us. And then the rest of the staff and I are also working very hard on that September payroll, which is our biggest payroll of the year. And this year with the new accounting system, we have to actually enter every single person in again and, you know, sign them deductions and, and make sure that that's working out well. It's been a lot of work and we've been a little bit short-staffed. Tomorrow is going to be the first day in about three or four weeks that we'll have our full staff, complimentary staff. So we've been a little busy this, this month, but we've been working hard and hopefully getting stuff taken care of. So everything seems to be going well for the start of school. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you, Scott. Heidi Ostrom, Evergreen School. Looks like you're solo tonight.
I am, I'm solo.
Let's see, go on.
I told Bobby I had to make it up to me.
It tastes so, or so slow.
Really? Yeah, maybe. It's an age thing, I think. Well, thank you for having me back again and for allowing Bob to return to the district. We are loving Evergreen. It's a life-size school, great community. We had a parent club organized, in fact, sorry, clean, school cleanup the evening, the Friday before school began. Eleven or twelve whole families showed up with tools and gloves and bark dust and plants and pressure washer and we are hosed down and swept out and we have new, bad choice of words, new bark dust and it, and it looks great and, and we were ready to go on the first day of school. Thank you, colleagues. I want to share with you the last year's report card. You'll see on the yellow sheet attached. In reading, Evergreen earned a level four, which is very strong in the area of reading. We're proud of that and we will certainly continue to work on reading and give it maybe a little bit extra focus this year to see if we can continue or bump it up. Mathematics, Evergreen scored at a level five, which is the highest status on the state report that a school can attain. And staff are proud of that as well as the remaining students. Our focus for this school year, as you have heard from the district, strategic district plan, we're going to focus on the same areas. So attendance is the first one and we are shooting for a minimum of ninety-five percent attendance by each Evergreen student through the year. I want to let you know that overall in thirteen, fourteen school year, last year, Evergreen attended nine, attained a ninety-five point two percent attendance rate. But as you heard earlier, that's an overall average. So that's not to say that every student attended at that high level. And last year, there were sixteen six total tardies. So for this year, we're going to work both on reducing tardiness by students and improving the attendance. To date, first week of school, we had attendance at ninety-nine point zero three percent. So woo-hoo, we're successful, met that goal for the first week of school. That's a good start. Second area that we, the way that we're going to really focus on the attendance is to maintain regular communication with both students and parents about student attendance and the importance of being at school daily. We will be sharing monthly information with families about research and about the importance of consistent attendance by their children. The, the third way we're going to address attendance is to identify where issues are existing early. So as children start to rise to the top and we notice in our monitoring that they have more than acceptable level of attendance problems at school, we'll be meeting with parents one-on-one, talking about the importance of it and sharing why kids have to be at school and doing the same with the students. So they'll be as involved in those conversations as their parents.
Heidi, just a suggestion, maybe district, I've got to look at this, is understanding reasons why the students are missing school and we can maybe pareto that out and take a look at areas we need to attack as far as, why, why is it convenient for the school?
I think you're right. And I think it'll be great information for us to gather as a district and useful then in helping parents to make perhaps some different decisions for.
Or maybe the district can make different decisions based on what the data tells us.
Exactly. Great. And then we will work on, haven't really begun this yet, to develop a monthly incentive program of some, some kind to encourage regular attendance by students. Second area of focus for Evergreen will be academics, of course, to maintain and improve instruction in both reading and math, other areas as well. As we've all agreed tonight, reading and math lead to the primary areas. We are obviously already doing well at Evergreen, but there's always room for improvement. And so as a staff, we will continue to look at that and work to improve what we offer. We want to identify early those students who are struggling and then implement specific short and long-term interventions for each of those individual students as needed by them. We're hoping to gather parent volunteers, after-school helpers, maybe high school helpers. We'll see how that goes. I'll be sharing that with you at another meeting. And then the third area that we want to focus on is teaching, focusing on student engagement as we discussed earlier this evening. And, and that teachers will demonstrate proficient level of performance in their daily classroom teaching. Wanted to share with you our student enrollment figures as we received from Andy. First year, first day in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, including kindergarten, we had seventy-five students enrolled. And the first day this year, we had seventy-eight, so we're at three. As of today, we still have twenty, uh, seventy-eight, so that's awesome. We do have room for more students, especially in upper grades six through eight are just slightly low. And so we're looking forward to having families contact us to ask if their students might transfer into those grades. I do want to invite you to the annual Evergreen High Social. It's coming up. This year's theme is a hoedown, scheduled for September twenty-sixth at six P M. It will be, again, be held out in the Play Shed. One exciting piece of development at Evergreen is that we've had a donation of clear corrugated fiberglass, is that what that stuff is? Siding? So that open side will now be covered. Yeah, Linda, will be, now be covered and the wind and the rain, at least mostly, will be unable to penetrate into our gym slash outdoor covered play area. So we're excited for that and thank you to community members and parents for installing that. So hoedown will be in the Play Shed. Included that night will be a very, very brief presentation by the principals about focus this year for the school and current needs that we, we have. And then just traditional carnival-type activities for the youngsters while the rest of us enjoy dessert. So I, I want to remind you, this is the So I want to remind you, this is the single fundraiser activity conducted at Evergreen, so please plan to attend, bring your checkbooks and lots of ink in your pen, and enjoy plenty of, right desserts. That's it. Do you have any questions?
Where did the pies come from? I'm curious about.
Homemade pies and other desserts.
Community members?
Yes.
That's great, very nice.
And they, well, I haven't been, but I'm told they're amazing.
They don't have a cook.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so I'm looking forward to it.
Is there a hoedown dress code?
Not to my knowledge, but if, you know, if you want to wear a turtleneck and hat or whatever, yes, you could be very welcome.
Be silly as you might.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks, Heidi.
Kristen Jorgensen, Robert Frost.
I was just bringing your checkbooks, Robert Frost. We won't have any pies. Checkbooks are welcome. Checkbooks are welcome. All right, so I first have to apologize, I didn't completely finish this. We've been kind of flu at our house for the last two days, so what's been, yeah, I'm clear. Lots of items asleep, but no one else is asleep. So the current enrollment, we are down 32, 32 students, but we sent a big class to Mark Wayne and brought up a small class from Eugene Field, so they actually, there was 97 coming from Eugene Field and we had 11 moving in this over the summer. So that class was actually bumped up quite a bit, and I'm a little nervous, and small class size is good until it comes to the funding that comes with that. So we have quite a few move-ins. I don't recall any of those, I think maybe two transfers, so the rest were students from Amity and Silverton, and some of the great, great families, so we're excited about that. Our, so our current number, the 395 is accurate, and then I have the bottom there, there are 14 students in our basic skills and 10 in our structural, structured learning program. So we had a great first week at Robert Frost this year. We did fourth grade orientation on the first day of school, so only fourth graders came, and we spent the day just really getting used to the school, the expectations, the way the hall, traffic flows, getting to the restroom, getting to the bus. We successfully did not lose any fourth graders on the first day, which the last two years, I've been there since until like 6 o'clock on the first day of school, because we're missing, not missing, they're somewhere, but not pretty close to there. So we, so this year, we had none, we were actually like, all the kids were at home the first round. It just was much nicer with just a fourth grade class, and a lot of great feedback from parents, a lot of great feedback from kids. Staff just said it felt really good to do that. In day two, fifth and sixth grade joined, so there, all the students were there, but the fourth graders knew what they were doing and everything really felt good. We also, I just wanted to know, Paula Layton does a great job with the bus. I mean, she was there, the buses showed up those first two days, she was there waiting for them, bus drivers, some of them were outside of their buses, she was, hey, get in your bus, you got to get going, I mean, they, she keeps it, it's a, it works, she does a great job, so she's very helpful. We spent a lot of time this year, and our staff in service, both certified and classified, on just some procedural things, how to get kids, like at the end of the day, the walkers need to go this direction, you're walking up, because we have kids walking, crossing Westfield Street, go one way out of the building, and then kids going like down Westfield, go behind the church just because of our parking lot traffic to keep them safe, and it wasn't really ever clear who was going where. And so we spent a lot of time with our staff, working on that, and just helped kind of make things go smooth that first week, so that was good. Feedback from staff is that the first week went well, very smooth overall climate, a couple staff mentioned, just the climate felt really good this year. So that always feels good to start the year. We have four new teachers, Jake Garrig, a former Robert Frost student and Southern Heights graduate. We were able to swipe him, swipe him from already, and he's an amazing PE teacher. I really encourage, he has those kids move in, they're doing lots of fun stuff already, and really loving PE, and that's great. We have three new sixth grade teachers, so that's kind of challenging to have three new teachers in one grade level, but they're doing great. Sandra Buckholz, not Who-Colts, Buckholz, is coming from Staton, and then Ian Reed just moved down from Alaska. So and Brigida Reinhart is a first-year teacher. So it's a good mix of experience, and they're fitting in early grade. So we have six sixth-grade teachers. One of our fourth-grade teachers moved down to the sixth grade because our sixth-grade class is very large, it's 152 kids, and overall, the number of IEPs and students on a grade level is much higher than our fourth and fifth grade, so we determined having an extra teacher in our sixth grade kept the numbers down, and it's been really good, feels good, and the kids are getting additional support that they need, just in a little bit of a smaller class size. It's amazing what three or four more bodies or three or four less bodies can do to a class dynamic. We also are focusing, Joey Mitchell and Tanis Burnish, our SLP and basic skills teachers have worked really hard with our mainstream teachers to get additional opportunities for our self-contained kids to get in the mainstream. So aside from parties and field trips, which has kind of been the norm, they've been in there for some different activities, our basic skills kids go in and do read-aloud with the fourth-grade teachers, and so that's been really neat for the kids, and the parents are appreciative of that. Technology, last spring, we were able to purchase an iPad for each of our teachers. There's a lot of desire to have iPads and have students with iPads, but the staff, the veteran staff especially, a little bit intimidated by them, weren't sure how they, some wanted to use them, some weren't sure, and so we purchased an iPad for every teacher with the intention they'd get comfortable with it, try some things out, maybe take a class, and then determine if they would use them in the classroom. And so in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be meeting with each of the teachers, making sure they're going to be using the iPad. If they had, some of them have said, no, thanks, I'm, this makes me uncomfortable, it's too much technology, which is fine, we'll put them towards a student lab, but the teachers who are using them are excited to get that technology in the classroom, and then we're going to be working on purchasing a set of iPads for the class use, and the kids can be using them as well. Outdoor school's coming up, so we have 152 kids going to Katmore. Just here in a couple of weeks, they're going to 24th or 25th of this month. So pretty quickly, we're really excited this year, we were able to, we had an $8,000 grant from the Gray Family Foundation, so Audubon Society is actually running the outdoor school. So in the past, our teachers that have to do the different stations and work through it, this year, the teacher's going to enjoy it and be part of the stations, and Audubon Society is actually running the camp, so that's exciting for us. And we just received word that next year, we have a $10,000 grant, $10,000 from the Gray Foundation to help support outdoor school, which keeps it affordable for the kids. I think each family, it's like $40, and then there's some scholarship money for people who can't afford it. So we're excited. 152 is the goal, to take them all, some of them are trying to be uninvited, but we're trying to encouraging them to take their choices. 152 is the goal. This year, of course, we've just, you know, you've heard about the focus of Robert Frost as well, saying things, attendance, we're, a couple of things we're doing with attendance is each month, we do Student of the Month on the final Friday assemblies, we're incorporating attendance awards. Last year, end of the year assembly, perfect attendance, kids get awards, and a couple of kids came up to me and said, if I'd known I would have had an award, I would have had perfect attendance. If it takes a piece of paper, that's great. So we're going to, we're going to give awards each month for every kid who has perfect attendance and see if that can help encourage them, because just little incentives like that sometimes is the driving force between, there's more a lot of times, but some of the kids, I would have, I would have came if, you know, changed my appointment, or I wouldn't have gone hunting with my dad if I would have known it. So we're going to work on encouraging them with some incentives.
I was thinking that he would come on his deathbed if he meant to get an award.
Yeah, get an award, come in front of your peers, enter sit an award, and clap from your students, and that's the difference. So I think just making it a focus. And then we did some work in the during in-service with the staff. All our staff heard about mission statement and in-service, and then I just asked them to write down, what does that mean to you? What does the mission mean to you? So just, I just noted down some of the things both certified and classified staff came up with, just as far as what our mission and what does that mean to them, or what does it mean at Robert Frost. So some neat comments there from our staff. And then professional development, we're continuing to dedicate one staff meeting each month to different professional development opportunities. So Quamocore, the new teacher evaluation system, our teacher cadre members are going to do something next week around the new evaluation system in Danielson, and just talking about what good teaching looks like. The training we did with Jordi Ellis was very eye-opening for myself and the Robert Frost staff that was there, both of them, I mean, Sherry Beans, one of the best teachers I've ever seen teach, and she said, there's a lot that I could be doing differently, just in those trainings. So they're really excited to share what they've known, what they've learned with the staff, and do some fun activities to just kind of talk about what does good teaching look like. There's a technology, like I said, we've got iPads, not everybody knows how to use them, we do have some experts, so they're going to share their knowledge and hope to get that, really helps to engage the students. And yes, lots of good stuff. We have open house on the 18th, you're welcome to come. No pie, but you can bring your checkbook again. We do have a Student of the Month Assembly September 19th, and so we're doing our Student of the Month early that month, just because it's homecoming, and so we're going to incorporate some homecoming activities. We have a lot of girls doing the Pop Warner cheerleading. They proudly wore their big orange bows, did everybody else have, yes, they have, they're great costumes, school-appropriate costumes. I was very thankful for the coach call, he said, can they wear their, oh, sorry, uniforms? Can they wear their uniforms? And I said, you know, if they're appropriate for school, and they were, and the girls were very, so it was fun on Friday. We had all the Pop Warner football players in their red, orange, and black jerseys, and then the girls in their cheerleading uniforms, and it was, it was pretty neat. So we're going to do some stuff with homecoming and school spirit next week, and then have our Student of the Month and attendance award assembly, outdoor school at the end of the month, and then our annual jobathon is in October. So that's Robert Frost, so far, so good.
Great questions. Okay, Kristen, thank you very much.
Kirsten, do you have an extra copy in your hand?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, any board reports this evening?
OSBA convention is coming up. Be sure that you can...
The dates are in your handbook here. I don't actually remember the dates often.
Well, these are regional meetings.
These are regional meetings. The dates for...
14 through 16.
14 through 16, November.
November 14 through 16.
16, should be a very good convention this year.
Talk to Denise if you haven't got reservations yet. Correspondence, I don't think we had any, did we, Andy? Second audience with visitors, excuse me, would anyone like to address the board tonight? Okay, if we're going to have one action item, the approval of the 2014-15 district goals. Is there a motion? Quit, move.
Second.
Move it second to approve the district goals for 2014-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're good, with no other business for adjourned. Thank you very much.